Good evening, everybody. This is Robert Taylor, the school board member for District One. Only announcement I have is that in our district, early voting starts for U.S. House District Seven. We begin early voting on November the 12th. Monday and Friday, voting starts at 8:00 a.m. and ends at 5:30 p.m. Tuesday and Thursday, it ends at 7:00 p.m. Wednesday and Saturday, the time ends at 4:30 p.m. I hope to see folks out at the polls voting. Thank you.
Thank you, District Two. No announcements. District Three. District Six.
Yes, just a couple of things. November 18th is the District Six, the next District Six Community Meeting. I'm tentatively hoping to have it at the new police precinct on Murphy's Bar Road. Waiting on confirmation, as soon as I have a location confirmed, I will share that information on my socials. And again, that's on November 18th, starting at 6:30 p.m. But I will make the final announcement on my social media pages and via an email. And happy 250th anniversary today to the U.S. Marine Corps. And tomorrow is Veterans Day, so thank you for all those who have served and continue to serve. So happy Veterans Day.
Thank you, District Seven. District Eight.
I just, I would like to reiterate, voting begins for U.S. House of Representatives, District Seven, on Wednesday, November 12th, ending Wednesday, November 26th, Election Day, Tuesday, December 2nd. Please get out and vote.
Thank you, District Nine.
Also want to beat that drum because we have people in my district who also will be voting in that special election. So please make sure you get out to vote. Early voting gets it out of the way. You don't have to worry about it. You just get it done. So please make sure you get out and vote as soon as possible if you are in District Seven for the House of Representatives. And then also just a reminder that we are collecting information about school start times. And there will be a virtual town hall on November 12th as well. So if you want to, if you haven't weighed in on a survey, go ahead and do that. And we appreciate all that feedback that we've been getting. So, thank you. Oh, and also Lawson High School has been having their theater program, Put on Little Women, and the last show is tonight. And it is, if you can be there, I think it starts at 6:00. If you haven't seen it yet, you need to get out there and see it. They've done a real good job with it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Chief Sullivan has a QR code, so if you are in the audience and you want to complete the survey for start and ending times, feel free to check out that QR code and complete the survey while you're here. We would greatly appreciate it. The more feedback we receive, the better we are informed in making a decision moving forward. So thank you so much for that. And then lastly, I am really excited about sharing one of the achievements of our, of one of our principals in my district. I'll wait until the, until the director does that, so I won't steal the glory, but really excited about that. And glad to be able to rejoin a school board meeting even though I am still sitting. So, just happy to get out the house. So, thank you all. All right, we will conclude announcements. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have, I apologize, we do have our junior student school board member.
Okay. Um, so just two announcements. Mayor's Youth Council is hosting their annual Mayor's Youth Summit, November 19th, from 7:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. It will be at the Martin Center. All students of Metro and other districts are welcome to come. Additionally, RISM is hosting a Your Voice, Your Vote event on November 11th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. There's more info on their Instagram account.
Thank you, and I apologize again. That concludes announcements.
Good afternoon. We'll call this meeting to order. We have a quorum with nine presence. Nine members present. We have one virtually. Member Fane is joining us virtually. So we do have, we have established a quorum. We'd like to have Pledge Allegiance by Lindsay Leek, who is a teacher at Early College. If you can lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Yeah, just come to the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you for teaching in our schools. Now I'll accept a motion or entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? Moved by Member Elrod. Is there a second? Second by Member Taylor. All in favor, say aye. All oppose. It passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to board, to awards and recognitions. Dr. Battle or Michael Cass? Okay, Dr. Battle. We can't hear you. No, we can't hear you now. Hold on, it might be on our end. Uh, Dr. Battle, can you speak, please? Test it. No, we can't hear her. Okay. We will have Michael Cass from our communications office lead us in the awards and recognition. Mr. Cass.
Thank you, Chair Player, and good evening, board members. Before we start with tonight's awards and recognitions, we wanted to acknowledge a couple of accomplishments by our student athletes late last week that we'll spend more time on at next month's meeting. First, the Martin Luther King Junior High School Boys Cross Country Team just went to Memphis and won the T double S double A state championship in Class Double A. Congratulations to the Royals. And Andre Adams, the quarterback for the Antioch Bears, who won their first round playoff game last week, is a finalist for Mr. Football this year in Class Six A. So congratulations to Andre. And again, more to come on our outstanding student athletes next month. Tonight, we're excited to recognize two of our educators for winning national awards and our MNPS Human Resources team for their own award-winning work to support employee wellness. First up tonight is Dr. Carmen Brown, principal of the Academy at Opry Mills, which, which is one of three schools we operate in partnership with the Simon Youth Foundation, a national nonprofit that works to provide educational settings in which students can overcome significant life challenges and graduate from high school. Dr. Brown, who has led the Academy at Opry Mills since 2012, is one of the very best at leading this important work. And the Simon Youth Foundation recognized his leadership recently by naming him the National Administrator of the Year. Dr. Brown, congratulations on this well-deserved honor, and thank you for always looking out for your students and staff and leading with such heart and skill. All right, congratulations again to Dr. Brown. We also have tonight our MNPS Human Resources team and the MNPS Employee and Family Healthcare Centers, which have not, have won not one, not two, but three awards from the American Heart Association for their commitment to the health and wellness of our MNPS workforce. I'd like to ask Annie Thornhill, Executive Director of Vice and Vice President of the American Heart Association's Nashville Office, to come to the podium and tell us a little more about these awards.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I need an extra hand because there's so many awards that we are here to present you with tonight. It is such an honor to stand in front of you tonight. On behalf of the American Heart Association, I'm joined by Kelsey Brown, who is one of our Community Impact Directors, to celebrate the extraordinary impact that you and your team, led by John Z. Holt here, are having on the, on employee health and well-being. As many of you know, we have been a proud partner on student heart health and education for decades, since the days of Jump For Health. And last year, we reached more than 25,000 students and their families with stroke and CPR education in the community. But as the daughter of a math teacher and the sister of a high school principal, it gives me extraordinary joy and a special, a special extra beat in my heart to celebrate this day when we are focusing entirely on employee health and well-being and the work that we're doing focusing just on the 10,000 staff and teachers who, who work day in and day out. Because we know that when we take care of ourselves, when we take a moment to stop and take care of ourselves, we do such a better job taking care of others. And I will also say, as the, as the mother of a student at MLK, go Royals, I know that when we have healthier teachers, our students are so much better. So just truly, thank you so much. Metro National Schools has been a leader. And when we launched Well Being Works Better and Target BP, y'all were the very first to sign up. And that has had a really big impact on the health and well-being of your employees. So Kelsey can talk just a little bit more about what some of the, some of the programs are.
Again, I just want to say thank you for all of you for participating in this. Like Annie said, you guys are participating in this for the last seven years. One of the first ones to participate in this program. You not only won the Well Being Works Better Award, but three awards in our data recognition program for Target BP, which recognizes clinics who submit data and record a 70% blood pressure control rate among patients served with hypertension. That's truly incredible. And then with Target Type 2 Diabetes and Check Change Cholesterol as well. You are also one of the only two clinics for us to submit for all three areas, which is just truly, we couldn't do this work without you. So thank you so much. And thank you for leading the way toward a future where heart health and overall well-being are the norm, not the exception.
So thank you, Superintendent, School Board Members, John Z. and the Wellness Team, for taking the time today to celebrate, for walking the walk, and doing this on behalf of the staff and teachers. We celebrate you and the whole team. So thank you. And we have this giant pile of awards to honor, which is part of our well-being today. We'll, we'll, we'll do some, some lifts as we come up to the stage. Yeah. And my glasses, so nobody will know.
So thank you so much, Ms. Thornhill. On behalf of Dr. Battle, we are thrilled and humbled to be honored for this work that is all about caring for our employees, which is such a high priority for all of us here. And to Chief of Human Resources, Lisa Spencer, and everyone on your team, as well as our partners from Vanderbilt Health, for all the great work that made this recognition possible. Congratulations, and thank you all for everything you do.
I'd like to thank Chief Spencer and David Hines and the team for all the great work they do and help us keep being healthy employees. Thank you. Is that it?
I think we're ready to turn it back over to Dr. Battle.
All right, we'll turn over Dr. Battle for the director's report. Dr. Battle.
All right, let's try this again. Hope you all can hear me.
Yay, we hear you.
Congratulations again to all of the awardees, those that were acknowledged this evening. I'm so sorry I couldn't be there with you all in person tonight as I've been under the weather. But let me just say again, a huge congratulations to each of our award winners, and thank you for representing our district so well with your skill, your dedication, and your unwavering sense of service to others. Again, really excited to have so much great leadership and partnerships happening all across our district. Now, Chair Player, I'll go ahead and jump again to the director's report. It's his for that. Again, thank you to our board chair, to all board members. First of all, thanks to everyone who has joined us for the, who joined us for the Celebration of Schools Parade Affair this weekend that featured the Metro Marching Classic. It was a wonderful opportunity to highlight our schools and the great work happening across the district, which was capped off by an incredible parade and outstanding performances from our marching bands that showcased the talent and creativity of our students. Tonight, you're going to hear two presentations from myself and the team. One on graduation rate and another providing an update on the school start, start time study. First, you'll hear from Dr. Tina Stinson, our Executive Officer of Research, Assessment, and Evaluation. She'll share more detailed information, but at a high level, we achieved the second highest overall graduation rate in our district's history. While, while this represents a slight dip from last year's record high, it remains a strong indicator of the progress our students and schools continue to make. Looking deeper into the data, we saw record-high graduation rates amongst several student groups. However, we did experience a decline among our Hispanic and Latino students, which contributed to the overall decrease. There are a number of potential factors, including recent changes in state and federal policy that may have influenced these results. While the overall numbers aren't exactly what we hoped, there are many, many bright spots to celebrate and build upon, particularly when you are able to achieve the second highest graduation rate in the district's history. We will continue to focus our efforts on supporting students who have been historically underserved and ensuring every student has the opportunity to succeed. Please be sure to engage meaningfully as Dr. Stinson comes in just a moment, because she will have several different celebrations and highlights that we should be extremely proud of as a school district and as the Nashville community. Following that, we'll have an overview of the ongoing school start time study, which we're conducting in partnership with Mayor Freddie O'Connell, Metro Government, and with the support of this entire board. We've already seen great engagement and engagement, excuse me, we've seen great engagement and feedback from stakeholders across the county, and we'll continue to gather input in the weeks ahead before bringing forward a more developed proposal for consideration later this year into January. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Stinson for the presentation on our graduation rates. And again, I encourage everyone to just kind of lean in and engage with her throughout this presentation because there are several bright spots that we want to make sure that the board is equipped with and that our entire community can celebrate. Dr. Stinson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Madam Chair, board members, good evening. As you know, I'm here to talk about graduation rate, but as always, we start with our focused outcomes. Transitions is, of course, the most relevant here, but literacy, numeracy, and positive school supports contribute to this important transition point. And as always, we stay grounded in our four core tenets. Before I jump in, I do want to recap some 2024, 25 data. It's been a while since I've been here. We had the highest scores ever in our TCAP achievement and EOC scores. We exceeded pre-pandemic and every other rate. We outpaced the state in achievement in almost every subject as listed up here. I won't read them all to you. We had significant gains in 19 of 21 grade-subject level categories in grades three through eight, and we earned our fourth unprecedented four-time Level 5 T-BOSS. As Dr. Battle mentioned, we do have some highlights. The second highest graduation rate in MNPS history. And, thank you. Highest graduation rates on record for a number of student groups, including our Black or African-American student group, our economically disadvantaged student group, our white student group, and our students with disabilities. In addition, though, as Dr. Battle mentioned, we saw a slight dip in our graduation rate. We actually had 271 more graduates in 2025 than in 2024. The cohort was simply a larger cohort. And before I get into the weeds of this year's grad rate, I'm just going to take you on a little longitudinal journey through graduation rate through time. Starting in 2006, the year before I started here, we were at 68.8% graduation rate. That was done in a very different way than our graduation rate now. It did not follow students over time. It was simply something like the number of students who graduated minus the number of students who dropped out without ever finding the dropouts. So we had that for my first several years here. And then we had our first cohort graduation rate. And it was called the National Governors Association Cohort Graduation Rate. This rate, as well as all the rates before it, allowed students who had disabilities or were English learners five years and a summer. And everybody else had four years and a summer. Now, and starting in 2011, every student, regardless of their disability status, their English learning status, has just four years and a summer. And we have to prove each and every student who leaves the district is enrolled somewhere else, leading to a four-year high school diploma, regardless of whether they are currently in our state or in our nation. So almost all the data you see, starting in, well, all the data you see in 2011 beyond, uses that cohort graduation rate. Starting at 76.2 in 2011, you see steady progress through now landing at our current 83.6% graduation rate. So I'm going to focus in next on post-pandemic graduation rates. You've seen charts very much like this before, but with proficiency levels. The greens are gains, the yellows are not gains. You can see that, though, we did have a loss in this past year. Over the post-pandemic period, we have gained almost two percentage points in our graduation rate for all students. As I mentioned, and I think Dr. Battle alluded to, some of our student group data is really to be celebrated, including our Black or African-American students who've made almost a six percentage point gain in this period. And if you look at our 2025 column, you'll see that 88% 88.6 percentage point grad rate is greater than our all-students grad rate. Really, the highest we have ever seen for this student group. Our Hispanic-Latino student group lost a little bit, a tiny bit of ground over this four years, but had been gaining steadily until this past year, when we had a 6.1 percentage point loss. Our white student group is at 92% now. Almost a 5% gain over this period, 1.7 percentage points of which happened in this past 24 to 25. Our ED rate is also almost at five percentage point gain over this period, with 0.3 percentage points of it happening in the last year. Our students with disabilities, look at this 22 percentage point gain from 2021 to 2025. 5.6 percentage points of that happened in the past year. And our LEP student group, again, had been, had been rising. We did see a little, we saw a loss last year, but overall, for the last, this period, four years post-pandemic, five years, 2.1 percentage point gain. The LEP student group is not synonymous with the Hispanic-Latino student group, though there is some overlap. Students can be students with disabilities and economic disadvantage and LEP and show up in any of these other student groups. Not pictured are some of our smaller student groups, but but we did see, for example, our Asian student group at 96.2%, which is up from 92.3. And with that, I am going to turn the mic over to Chief Brastad.
Thank you, Board Members. A pleasure to be here today. So as I believe everyone knows, we have commenced on a, on a law screen. Okay, a school start time study with engagement with the mayor's office and Metro Government and the Board of Education. Going to run through some of this briefly. So this is a partnership between us and an organization called Formative that is an expert in transportation, school transportation particularly. And so we're engaging with them on a community engagement and transportation study. It'll be driven, community-driven. No decisions have been made yet. This is just the starting of the process. And so what we're trying to do is get initial feedback, just thoughts generally from the community and our stakeholders. And then the team is going to take that back and come up with some more extensive proposals. And so right now, we're in the middle of the first phase of the community engagement. This, we've got an initial survey that's been out there. We've gotten more than 10,000 responses so far. We have already started to conduct focus groups. We had a team out there at the Celebration of Schools engaging with people throughout that facility. And we have some virtual town halls coming up. First one is going to be Wednesday at noon, and then next Tuesday, the 18th, at 5:00 to 6:00, sorry, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we're going to engage folks in that way. And we're also having a series of small focus groups focused on a variety of stakeholders that try to be representative samples of the community to hear their more extensive qualitative feedback on this topic. So we want to make sure that we have a broad perspective from a lot of different families, and we're going to try to keep our website updated, promoting it out on social media and through other channels like Remind and our call-out system in the various supported languages. So right now, we're at Phase One, Awareness and Discovery. So we've launched this. The team has gathered a lot of transportation data from our folks to try to do some analysis around that, as well as that feedback that they're getting on a daily basis. That's going to take us into a development of a schedule of options. And so they're going to take the information and the feedback they get and try to come up with something that is feasible within the context of Metro Nashville Public Schools and the Davidson County. And then that will lead to another more extensive round of engagement, including some town halls, surveys, feedback, et cetera. And then ultimately, that will lead to a proposal to the Board of Education that you can vote on. And that proposal may be the thing the same, where it may be changing start times, but really, we want to make sure that we are starting the conversation first with, you know, what do, what do people want to see? And then how do we, how do we get there? So that is pretty much all I have right now. We've got it pretty limited, but we're always happy to answer questions. I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Battle.
All right. Thanks so much, Chief Brastad and also Dr. Stinson. Chair Player, we'll turn it back over to you to respond to any questions from the board.
All right. Is there any comments or questions for the board? Member, sorry, our student board, our junior student board member?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So how are we going to combat the fact that we're losing, like, graduation rate specifically from the Hispanic population? Given, given that 14% of the Metro Nashville population is Hispanic?
Hello. First, we have to understand what happened this past year. I think we can speculate on various things. But we are undertaking some study as to why we saw that graduation rate loss. And reviewing the data, I talked to a school this morning that has a high Yell and Hispanic population, reached out to various chiefs. So we're actively engaged in that. I'm hoping it's a one-off, but we shall see. And I will invite Chief Perry up.
Thank you for that question. As well, what we're doing for all of our students and what we're doing is engaging in our cohort data a lot earlier than we have in the past. We typically do this in March. We have already received all of our cohort data for not just this graduating class, but even for the cohort after this one. So engaging in finding our students, knowing where they are, and then making sure that we're documenting correctly.
Yeah, let me, let me add here with this specific question. I think this is a, a point where we all, as a community, have to understand what's happening around us. Both state and, and federal policy changes does have an impact on things like graduation rate. And so while we don't have direct control over those particular matters, as was mentioned already, we're already studying that and, and trying to get a better understanding of the implications it's had for our students and our families. What is representative in the information and the data that's already been shared is that from a historical standpoint, the, the strategies that the team has had in place actually is working. And so we've got to continue to double down on those strategies as well as continue to advocate at, at levels much higher than the control of the district, but from the state and federal perspective to make sure that we can continue to deliver on meeting the graduation expectations for all of our MNPS students. But I think there's clear indications that the strategies that are there have been working outside of some of those policy shifts. And then just looking at it from an individual student family basis, also from a school impact level, we'll continue to do that as we will do for every other student group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Weber Elrod?
Thank you. My first question is about graduation rates, and I guess it kind of piggybacks off the question we were, we just had, which is, do we happen to know any graduation data about our Hispanic Latino populations across the state? Was this something we saw in other districts? Is that something that we would know or that we could share?
Tina?
Yes, it did decline at the state level, not quite as much as us. However, we have the plurality of the students in the state enrolled in our district. And I'll just say a tiny word about the policy shift in that if a student leaves our district, goes to another district and is chronically absent there for six, like, and don't, they don't attend for 60 days, they're coming back and counting in our grad rate, which is a new policy at the state level.
Can you restate that? I'm so sorry, Dr. Stinson.
Yes. If a student leaves our district, goes to another county, they are enrolled in the other county and they would be typically responsible. However, if they are not enrolled and attending for 60 days in that district, they are being sent back to count against us. That is a new policy change.
Okay. I was going to say, I don't know of that. Okay, so that is new. All right. My other question is about our students with disabilities. The 22% change, positive change of increase in graduation rate from 2021 to 2025 is, should be celebrated. That's a really impressive number, particularly with a student group that is historically difficult to move forward in getting graduation rates. And of course, always concerns of finding the right persons inside of our students with disabilities, because we have lessening graduation rates of people with that certification as teachers. How did we, or what factors do we think have played into this? What do we think has helped us get to this 22%? I understand we particularly this year has had a 5.6%. That's a big increase by itself. So what factors do we think we have found that have been beneficial? And is there anything for us as a board that we should be acknowledged about for funding or any future concerns of funding?
As the team is coming to respond, I must give a shout out to Debbie McAdams, who leads our Exceptional Education Department as our Director, as well as Deputy Chief David Williams, that entire team. But of course, all of our exceptional education educators all across the district. The last several years, they've really been really intentional around their continuous improvement work, cycles of improvement, and pretty vigorous progress monitoring. And so while the team is going to talk more tactical strategies about some things that have taken place, I just wanted to commend both the mindset and dedication of our entire exceptional education department for just through graduation rate, making sure every student is known that they have what they need, including strong partnerships with our families and the community. And several board members have been a part of several convenings we've had with this particular talented group of advocates and, and leaders all across the city who's helped us really come to realize such positive outcomes for our exceptional education students. So team, I'll let you talk a little bit more from a tactical perspective, some of the, some of the strategies we've deployed. Just wanted to commend the entire team as a whole for this incredible outcome.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, and thank you for the question, Board Member Elrod. Just to add on to what Chief Perry said and what Dr. Battle said is really takes a community. But it's about being systematic. And so have creating a system at the school level, the district level, to know that I've got to get a Gen Ed diploma in four and a half years. I've got to be really intentional about understanding what credits students have, what they're missing. And how could, if they're missing credits, how can I ensure that they are contacted and find a way to make up that credit as soon as possible? And that's not just with students with disabilities. That's every student that we have. So it's, it's really knowing where you are and being really, really relentless in ensuring that we're providing students with those opportunities to get those credits so they can graduate on time. So we talk about grad rate. It's the on-time grad rate four and a half years. And we know that students with disabilities, we want them to earn a Gen Ed diploma. They have the same set of expectations, those 22 credits. We've got to make sure they have every opportunity to meet those credits. Oh, yeah, and our alternate academic diploma as well, for our 1% of students who fit into that category.
Does that 1% of students count within this additional increase? Okay, that's what I believed. Okay. Okay. I appreciate that. I, I have no other further questions.
We'll go to Vice Chair McKitty, and then Weber O'Hara Block, and then Weber Tyler.
Thank you. Can you provide me some clarification? I, I heard you say that we did have an increase in the number of students who graduated. However, our graduation rate decreased. Can you explain to me how that works and how we got there?
I can try. Sure. I, I often get glazed looks, but basically the graduation rate, you take a cohort of students, you subtract out students who leave the district who we can prove, and you add in students who come into the district, and that's our denominator. That's the, the potential graduating cohort. Then in the numerator is the number of graduates with regular diplomas and A A D diplomas. So the numerator increased, the denominator increased more, the, the actual number of students who could have graduated.
Increased. Gotcha. Thank you for that. The second question that I have, the new policy that you mentioned around, is it attendance or claiming that, that falls into graduation rate? Do you know what the impetus behind that policy was for?
I do not. It has been the case for a couple of years that if a student was enrolled for 60 or fewer days, they could, sending district, a receiving district could send the students back to us. And we do it too, by the way. We just had more come back this year than we shifted out. I don't know why they changed it to enrolled and attended. I, I do not know. But essentially, as Chief Perry mentioned, we, we have these cohorts of students, and this changed this year. And some of the students may have left in 2022, right? So it was very difficult, if we didn't know that this was the policy, to go back and find them. So essentially, it shifts the responsibility of finding and tracking chronic absenteeism in the receiving school back to the sending school district. And we're trying to work out ways to figure out how to do that, which it's difficult, as you can imagine.
So just for clarification, if a student was enrolled in MNPS, but went and enrolled in Shelby County Schools in a totally different city, three hours away, if they had chronic absenteeism there, it's still our fault?
If, if they did not at least attend 60 days, yes, it shifts back to us.
Weber O'Hara Block?
I, I do think this is an important conversation to have, just for folks to understand how the literal movement of the graduation rate can work. So two things on that. The way I'm understanding the explanation, and it makes sense to me. So students in the Hispanic and Latino population, probably more students were leaving this year without having documented that they had gone somewhere else, which is the requirement that we need in order to be able to say that we know where those students ended up, and therefore, they're not actually part of the graduation cohort. And if we hadn't seen them graduating, then that wouldn't increase our graduation rate. And if we hadn't had documentation that they were leaving, then that also wouldn't increase our graduation rate. And so that explains some part of the, the, the loss there. And I, I think it's a really important point that we've seen that Dr. Battle made in response to Ava's question, that in basically every other student subgroup, we've seen improvement. At the same time, I think there's probably a remaining question that is not sort of logistical and statistical in the way we're talking about it right now, that is about, that is, I think, a little bit more behind Ava, at least what I would imagine your question to be, and what I think is important, which is, if there aren't going to be major shifts in either state policy or federal policy, and as we are thinking about the things that have led to increases in graduation rates with the general population of students at MNPS, what else do we think we could be doing to, to try and address either the specific population of Hispanic Latino students, which is a large percentage of students in the county? Or, and our fastest growing group, or, you know, to continue to accelerate graduations, graduation rates overall? I have one that y'all haven't mentioned yet, which is, we've been hearing a lot about the A O N strategic plan, about the cluster-based pathways, but are there other things that y'all are thinking about that you would put into this category? So less like the finding students and graduation rate documentation and more the, how are we improving overall? Supports, yeah.
And as, if, I don't, I can't see if somebody from the team is at the podium, but what was shared early, I'm drawing a blank on who mentioned this, I think it was, I can't remember who mentioned it. But one of the, Tina, I think, mentioned, like, part of this is leveraging some of the structures we already have in place, like early, like leveraging our navigators, leveraging our counselors, leveraging our teachers, and building those relationships and lines of communication, continuing to leverage things like our Community Achieves Team, so that we can provide support, information, guidance as needed and within the realm of the law, so that our students continue to be engaged, continue to show up, and continue to obtain the credits they need to meet our graduation requirements. And so part of that conversation is having those individual conversations to continue to, both personalized, but also look at trends of things that might be top of mind for students and families and how we can, within our realm of control, support those students and families towards a successful graduation. So that's why those conversations are critically important at this time. It was also mentioned that schools are leveraging their cohort lists much earlier and sooner than we have in the past. Again, from as early as that ninth grade year, making sure that those four-year plans and those supports are in place from, from start to finish. And that's probably going to be some of our key levers to help us begin to rebound with that particular. that particular, with this particular student group, to make sure that their graduation rates are, you know, again, rebound or, and are at the rates of all of our other student groups across the district.
Thank you, and I appreciate the clarification. I think it's important just to say that when we talk about things like engaging in cohorts, what we're talking about is looking at which particular students are we worried about, gaining the credits, making it through, getting to a point where they'll feel like they are poised to graduate. And so I just wanted to make like a slightly finer point.
Yeah, and I thank you for clarifying that, Board Member Block, because what is often thought about is graduation rate is the seniors that are in the school building at the time of graduation, and it extends far beyond that when you're talking about your cohorts, it goes all the way back to that first entrance into high school, into ninth grade, regardless of where the student ends. And so that's important for the board and the community to realize is that you can graduate 100% of the students who are with you or who have been tracking with you and still not meet their graduation rates, along with students who started with you four, five years ago, who may have transitioned somewhere else. And so that's what that cohort really represents. I appreciate you surfacing that.
Yeah, and graduation's a 13-year effort, but it's really, the graduation rate is certainly a very specific four-year effort, right? And it's not just the senior year. And I just want to, I'd be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to say how excited I am about the school's start times bell study. So thank you to your team for engaging in that. And I just, I know there are, we have these different phases upcoming. I'm just wondering how frequently we might expect, or the public might expect, just to hear more about what we're learning.
Sean, would you like to respond to that? I think you've got the workflow. I think it's going to be pretty frequent here over the next couple of weeks or months as we enter the second semester of the school year. But Sean, do you want to give a more detailed response?
Yeah, so we'll share those engagements. We'll send out sort of semi-frequent reminders about the survey. So that'll be about two more weeks of engagement on that side, and then it will take a few more weeks to come up with sort of those scenarios that will then be brought back out to the community. So we intend to have pretty frequent updates online and, you know, at the board meetings as needed to make sure everyone's sort of looped in on what's happening there. But I think there will be significant interest in this, and so I imagine there will be continual conversations about this, particularly once we get to those scenario conversations and people have something to react to.
I think it's been really well-publicized so far, from what I can tell. I mean, I feel as a parent and as a community member, like, I've seen it a bunch of places, so thank you.
Thank you.
A member Tyler?
Yeah, so just a quick clarification, because my other questions have been answered, so thank you guys for being very thorough in your questions. But for the school start times, you said that there are two upcoming virtual halls, and one's on Wednesday, November 12th, from noon to 1:00, and one's on Tuesday, November 18th, from 5:00 to 6:00.
Yes, correct.
And I know that it's on our website, are there any other places where people can find out how, where do they need to go to be able to participate in that?
So it's on a, you know, a website or calendar on the website, and we're going to be sending out a message tomorrow morning through Mind and also on social media, not tomorrow morning, the morning of, sending people the link and letting them know that it's going to happen. So just sort of a brief update there. So we'll continue to push it out in those channels.
Okay, and then what's the structure of that town hall going to look like? Are people going to get a chance to speak, or is, how is it going to work?
It'll be a little bit more structured, just because, you know, you could have several hundred people there, and it can get kind of chaotic. So what we'll have is we'll have some moderated Q and As, we'll have people from both formative and the district there to help answer questions, some surveys, live surveys during that process to get some feedback from them as well. So just a variety of those tools to kind of, it's going to be a lot more informative on that side than it will be, you know, as much engagement, just because we're still on the early side of it. Once we get to the scenario things, we're planning to have more in-person town halls where we can actually have, you know, sort of get those reactions back and forth, because right now it's very sort of conceptual. And so we're just trying to get that initial feedback, and then we'll have that more deep engagement in person, once we have that opportunity for people to react to something.
Okay, well, I just want to, again, take a moment to ask the community in general to make sure you participate in this. Personally, I have been pushing for a change in our school's start times, especially at the high school level, so this is something that's important to me, and I would love to see the community come out and speak up. So make sure we hear your voice. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to, thank you, Dr. Battle, and thank you to your team. That concludes the Director's Report, we'll move on to public participation. We have two people. KB Butler? You have two minutes.
Alrighty, so my name is KB Butler, I am the founder and CEO of Black Lemonade. Our job or work is really turning lemons into lemonade for the minority and underserved youth. I come here representing a family that lives in District 3 currently, but our organization actually serves in District 1, 3, 4, and 5, with the hopes of serving in all of y'all's districts. Definitely want to thank you all for the hard work that you guys do and that you consistently continue to remove barriers to support our youth. Black Lemonade's history, we serve in the capacity of out-of-school time opportunities for our youth. About a month ago, I ran into a situation with one of our families who I mentioned currently lives in, oh, excuse me, currently lives in District 3. They actually grew up in District 1 and had to make the decision to move into District 3 to be in zone. They faced home insecurity, which led to them moving into District 3 but wanting to still attend school in District 1. And so as I hear you guys talking about the graduation rates, the attendance, and the barriers that kind of all fall into that, I think that this example or this story can help in determining, you know, school times and removing additional barriers. This family, again, faced homelessness, moved from District 1 to District 3. They were told that District 3 was their new zone, but when they started attending at that school, they realized that they were in a PR zone, which I can come to find out is called parent responsibility. Again, this was normally a family who was a family of eight, two-parent household, white house, picket fence, unfortunately, ended up being a one-parent household, seven people in that house. Mom is the only one taking care of this family. They live in a PR zone, they have no form of transportation, and there is not a conducive, it's not a
I was like, you're worthy welcome to send a statement or a note to the board with the rest of it.
Yes, so their transportation to school is not just conducive, especially with the weather coming in, no sidewalks, they're having to trespass, it is a 30-minute walk. So I just want to, the board to consider looking at the PR zone moving forward.
Thank you. Craig Harris?
Yes, how you doing, board? Greetings, MNPS board members. My name is Craig Harris. I'm a college student scheduled to graduate next month, majoring in communications and minoring in journalism. I am also the proud parent of a future Belmont Business graduate, minoring in Japones and a military dad. I have served as a homeschool instructor and am a licensed minister, solid in ethical faith, an active community member, and multi-organizational volunteer with professional and academic references. I am extremely passionate about enhancing our students' educational experience, looking forward to utilizing my degree as combined experienced serving individuals with behavior, mental, and developmental disabilities. I actually applied for a teaching assistance position this year, but MNPS employment site and application process continuously malfunctioned. Another mat for another time. I'm here today specifically to complete a journalism assignment, which requires me to listen carefully to the matters covered today, take notes, and convey the information into a story for local news sources. While I have this opportunity before the board, I requested to speak to an important inquiry or address an important inquiry based on my goals after graduation. I have developed a new project-based curriculum focused on innovative methods of interpretation that enhances comprehension, critical thinking, and digital literacy that I believe significantly will benefit Metro Nashville students and improve literacy as well as behavioral outcomes at school, home, and in the community. I speak today to ask for the official process to get this new curriculum approved as a pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and if you have any other comments, you can email it to the board, too.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. That concludes plug participation, we'll move on to governance issues. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Has been moved by member Mays. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Hold up.
Sorry.
Chair. I do a roll call. All right, we need to do a roll call vote because member Fane is virtual. Dr. Sevier, will you please do a roll call?
And Ms. Fane, if you could turn your camera on, please.
Member Fane, you need to turn your camera on, please, for the vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Young votes aye. Dr. Nabah McKinney?
Aye.
Dr. Nabah McKinney votes aye. Ms. Fane?
You have to state again, member Fane.
Aye.
Ms. Fane votes aye. Ms. Mays?
Aye.
Ms. Mays votes aye. Ms. O'Hara Block?
Aye.
Ms. O'Hara Block votes aye. Ms. Tyler?
Aye.
Ms. Tyler votes aye. Chair Player?
Aye.
Chair Player votes aye. Madam Chair, you have nine ayes.
All right, this agenda passes unanimously. We'll go to board reports. I just want to say Happy Veterans Day to all of our employees who are veterans or serving in the reserves, so thank you for your service and hopefully enjoy tomorrow's day. And then next, our next meeting will be December 9th. We will not have a meeting in two weeks due to the holiday Thanksgiving break, so our next meeting will be December 9th. Be no further business, this meeting's adjourned.